Okay, good evening. This is Tuesday, March 19th, 2019. Board of Education meeting. The board has been in closed session since 6:00 PM. We have five members present, two absent, and at this time we'll stand for the pledge.
I'd like to lead you into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the board was in closed session for the items listed on the agenda, and we will now do a couple of recognitions. We have a shining star recognition for the Focus 205 facilitating team. So if they could come up and stand in the middle, please.
It is great to be able to finally recognize all of you. It's been a lot of, a long time and a lot of work. So this is our facilitating team for Focus 205. So beginning in April of 2015, Elmhurst District 205 launched an exciting new community engagement initiative called Focus 205. This program was a collaborative conversation between the community and the school district, facilitated by district residents, focusing on the topics of next-generation learning, future-ready classrooms, and other key issues involved in maintaining an exceptional educational experience for our students. The engagement process spanned nearly three years and served as a foundation for the creation of District 205's master facility plan, and ultimately the passage of the $168.5 million referendum. Tonight, we'd like to thank each one of you for all of the work that you have done over this long stretch of time and the success of the passage of the referendum. So tonight, we say thank you to the Focus 205 facilitating team for your countless hours of service and dedication towards advancing educational excellence and opportunity for generations of District 205 students to come. So with that, thank you so much.
I'm going to give you the certificate and let if you could go around for the other members. All right. Karen, are you coming up? Thank you so much. Shannon, coming up? Thank you so much. Margaret, are you coming up here? John? Is trying to get in the bathroom.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Wendy Albert. I'm the Division Chair for Career and Tech Ed, and if Mr. Burrell and Mr. Rosenberg could come join me, I'm honored to introduce them this evening on behalf of myself and Principal DeLuca. They have an exciting and rich business partnership that they have fostered over the past 11 years in the Business Management Honors class that we have at York High School. Mr. Rosenberg regularly volunteers his time to work with the business management students, sharing his professional expertise and helping students learn important concepts that they apply throughout the semester in the J.A. Titan Online Business Simulation. In this simulation, students run virtual companies. While doing so, they're able to develop critical thinking skills as they make decisions based on price, marketing, research and development, capital investment, and charitable giving. Both Mr. Rosenberg and Mr. Burrell have been involved in the Junior Achievement Program, and this is an organization that serves over 88,000 students in DuPage County through the programs that help students master concepts that will help them become economically successful. Both gentlemen were recently honored at the Junior Achievement Fundraiser Banquet for their work with the program. Mr. Burrell was selected as the Junior Achievement Educator of the Year, and Mr. Rosenberg was honored as the Junior Achievement Volunteer of the Year. So congratulations to both of them.
I am not going to repeat any of the wonderful things that Wendy already said. I am going to talk about the importance of the shining star because, in this instance, it's nominated by one of their peers, and Wendy Albert nominated this group, and I think that means a lot. That means a lot because it means someone who sees what you do all the time recognizes that you do a little bit more than what is normal, and the normal is very high. I've worked in junior achievement. It's a big commitment. So someone who sees what you do every day recognizes that you do a lot more. And again, being selected as the Junior Achievement Volunteer of the Year and the Junior Achievement Educator is a huge honor, and it brings prestige to our community. So thank you very much again, and please allow the board to come by and shake your hand. So let me give you each a certificate.
I would only like to recognize Mr. Burrell.
Oh, come here.
He is my guiding star. Let me just talk loud. He is my guiding star. So I follow him in this. We are a great team together, but as a professional teacher, this man is at the top. So thank you, Jim.
Again, I told you the importance of the people that work together when they recognize what you do. That means a lot. That means a lot. So thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is public comments. The board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. I have a few names on the list, so when I call your name, you can come up. There's a timer that will run. It will beep when three minutes are up, and we ask that you wrap up your thought. So first on the list is Lexi Lukos.
I am Angelica D. Benedictus.
And I'm Lexi Lukos.
And we are both juniors from York Community High School, and we are here to represent the student body and all of our students that came with us today.
Say hi.
And we're representing the students that want to make a change at York. We are looking to make York a more environmentally sustainable and conscious place pertaining specifically to the waste that we produce every single day. We have done a lot of research in our classes, specifically our Spanish 4H ACP class, about issues we have at York and how we can resolve them. The solution that we have come up with is something that could meet the school board needs and also our environmental needs.
So just to contextualize you with the issue at hand, according to the Environmental Protection Agency, or the EPA, each individual produces about 4.4 pounds of trash per day. Now, if you consider the 3,000 students that attend York, this is over 14,000 pounds of trash per day. Now, York is no exception to the EPA stats. According to a 2017 research initiative conducted by Eco Club, they found data in our lunchrooms and our food waste systems. They found that 10.5 pounds of uneated food is put into the trash and eventually finds themselves in the landfills every day. In addition to this, over 148.5 pounds of compostable food. That's almost 150 pounds of food that could have not been gone to the landfill, but rather could have been turned into soil within less than a week. So this food does not need to go to the trash. It could be used in a more environmentally sustainable way. Now, our plan is to have a compost collection at York. So this means that we are not trying to compost at York, since that would be a really big duty that we don't have the resources for, but there are different agencies in Elmhurst that could do this for us and get the job done.
So we know that the waste contract for York is about to expire, so we would like to ask you guys to please consider adding compost collection to the new contract. One way we could do this is working with Republic Services, which is what we already use for our recycling program at York, and they also do the curbside collection in the residential areas. And so we made a phone call to them, and they said that they would be able to pick up on Wednesdays at York. So it's something that's very in our hands, and we would be very able to do so.
The time is now, and we need your support more than ever. Elmhurst College right now has the most expansive composting program, and this is just a block away from us. We can use their resources and their expertise to help have composting here at York. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'm not sure how to pronounce the name. Maya?
Hello. We are also here representing students at York High School. We would like to suggest the implementation of reusable plastic bottles in order to sell at our school and to be able to be used at the nine water bottle fountains that prevent single-use plastics. This would be a major step towards lowering the negative impact that these single-use plastics have on the environment. Waste haulers in the area are no longer taking plastic, which causes other disposal methods to be used, which do harm the environment significantly. This leads to increased contaminations of oceans and air. If the composting proposal is accepted, replacing styrofoam with recycled or compostable plastic would allow a larger percentage of our school's waste to be composted, as the other group suggested. In our school, the water fountains that fill up our water help eliminate waste very often and are used a lot.
And like Maya said, in our school, the water fountains that fill up your water have helped eliminate waste from, on average, 149,000 plastic water bottles. And when you combine all the fountains together, this adds up to 2 million saved plastic water bottles. If we implemented the use of reusable plastic bottles, this would allow our school and our community to set an example for other areas which are causing the deterioration of our planet as a whole. And this is an example of the kind of reusable water bottle that we would be giving out to students. It takes someone to start a movement, and this is York's chance to lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Lonnegren?
Hi, I'm Barbara Lonnegren. I'm representing Elmhurst Coal Cities Coalition. I'm also here to talk about the waste contract. In DuPage County, there are two school district-wide composting programs. Additionally, there are schools in several districts with site-specific food scrap composting programs being implemented, with plans to eventually expand successful programs district-wide. Since Elmhurst already has food scrap composting at the residential level, we believe incorporating a trial composting program in one or more of District 205 schools would go a long way in reducing Elmhurst's overall impact on the environment. Community Consolidated School District 93 in Carroll Stream started its composting program at Western Trails Elementary School, enrollment of 386 students in 2015. With assistance from SCARES, a school waste audit identified that food scraps comprised 82% of the school's waste stream. Today, less than 1% of food scraps generated at the school go to landfills. Just one year after the trial program, all nine schools in the district were participating in the commercial compost program aided by Student Council and Eco Clubs. Western Trail has been recognized by the Illinois Food Scrap Coalition We Compost Program, and Western Trails has been named an Illinois Green Ribbon School in 2017 for this and other environmental stewardship efforts. Villa Park School District 45 introduced commercial food scrap composting in all of their lunchrooms, prep kitchens, and teachers' lounges in 2016. School District 45 serves 3,400 students from Villa Park, Lombard, Oak Brook Terrace, and Elmhurst. Diverting food scraps from the landfill reduces methane emissions, a powerful greenhouse gas which contributes to climate change. Composting is an eco-friendly alternative that converts nutrients from food scraps into nutrients for our soil. The USDA and EPA goals for 2030 are to reduce food waste by 50%. With any composting program, whether on a residential level or within a school district, it requires buy-in from key stakeholders. Within 205, this includes staff and students, student clubs and their adult leaders, custodial staff, PTA, and school and district administration. Additionally, successful composting programs require educating all parties involved. The nonprofit organization SCARES was instrumental in the successful programs within District 93 and 45, as well as individual school composting programs throughout DuPage, and they have offered their assistance with education should District 205 be willing to pursue a trial program. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Just procedurally, the board does not respond to public comments at this time, so we will go on with the agenda. Next is our reports and presentation section of the meeting, and first is the instructional materials for 2019-2020 with Dr. Cohen.
Good evening. Thank you very much. It's that time of year again. Tomorrow's the spring equinox. The weather's getting warmer, and we're here to put resources on display. Resources for supporting the curriculum, our curricular changes that may be happening in 2019-2020 have been looked at and approved by Learning and Teaching Department. Now, we bring them to you to put on display for 30 days prior to board approval in April. We have several areas of curricular change or modification that we are bringing forward for resources. It is important to note, as we talked about with some of the members of the Finance Committee last week, that these resources have been vetted for their cost-effectiveness as well as their quality. In grades K through 5, anchor texts for social science curriculum have been selected. These are nonfiction, small books around topics, whether those are people, events, or, you know, major turning points in history, or even things in our community. These are very, you know, these are leveled texts for the grade level and are generally very low-cost. English novels. We have aligned our English curriculum at the freshman level to overlap with the new human geography course, whether that's regular or AP at the freshman level. So this requires a few different paperbacks and would have been read in English 9 in the past. As well, we're also looking at new style manual for AP composition, and college literature is adding more books to its repertoire, but not, all students will not purchase them. This is going to increase choice so that students have the ability to choose from an array of textbooks or, I'm sorry, paperbacks to read from, rather than just being compelled to read one. The human geography class, as I mentioned before, is new for next year. The AP course does require a resource that is approved by the college board. We have selected a digital resource, which depending on how we structure our contract at their next bookstore, they could bring the resource well under $30 if we can secure a multi-year agreement. Auto-consumer ownership. This is a workbook that'll be used in class. It's an inexpensive resource. AP Physics and AP Chemistry, these are resources through OpenStax. They are free. Last, the book we've used in the past for AP Physics, purchased new, could be up to $300. This will be a zero-cost option. And Business Law is updating its resource to another ebook. The one that they've been using, the copyright date was 2008, getting a little long on the tooth, so we chose to, you know, they've chosen to move in a different direction. With your approval, which I believe comes later in the meeting, we'd like to put these resources on display for 30 days pending approval at the second meeting in April. Do you have any questions at all at this time?
Shannon?
Thanks for the information. For the, what is it, Industrial Technology Department, its auto upkeep, that form was blank, so maybe before the next meeting, it must have been some kind of oversight or something, the misinformation's not there.
Okay, that must be in my park, because as I dump things in the Google Drive, maybe I grabbed the wrong file, so I apologize for that.
Auto upkeep?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
No problem.
I think that's it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next is Social Studies Curriculum Development. Dr. Henderson and Dr. Cohen.
Good evening, everyone. We are happy to be here this evening to talk to you about the social studies curriculum development that has been going on in the district. I'm going to go a little bit more slowly than I normally do with this slide, because I think we'll find that there's quite a bit of relevance when we start talking about the why change. So as a reminder, our district vision is for all of our students to graduate college career and life-ready. We will know that we're successful at attaining this vision when our students can demonstrate competency in the six Cs. These become really important as we start to look at, why would we shift and move toward different instructional practices with our social studies curriculum? The way we're going to get to the attainment and demonstrated competency in those six Cs is through the rigor and relevance framework. With our learning and teaching priorities, curriculum development really falls under priority two, which is about developing curriculum resources and assessments in key content areas. Although, as we do develop curriculum, we also talk about instructional strategies, and particularly how they align to rigor, relevance, and the six Cs. So our goals this evening are to present the rationale, why are we shifting and changing? What are the significant instructional shifts that come with a new social studies curriculum? Review the process for curriculum development, and talk about a timeline for implementation. So this is a slide with text that comes from the Social Science Revision Task Force at the state level. So as they adopted new standards for social studies, I just want to point out some of the key words versus reading this all to you. You'll see civically engaged, socially responsible, culturally aware, global awareness, critically analyze and evaluate, civically responsible. So those are things that really align with our six Cs, as well as our curriculum team who launched this work. So our District 205 Teachers of Social Studies will challenge our students to become informed citizens, critical thinkers, and really focus on the global community. So just to go back and review for a moment, this graphic is just of the six Cs, and as you think about those words that were on those previous two slides about what we want our student outcomes to be as they go through our social studies curriculum, K-12, it really is about being competent in the six Cs. Are our students critically thinking? Are they good citizens? And by citizens, we don't mean just our local community. We are talking about global citizenship. Are they being creative in solving problems that are present today in society? How are they communicating? How are they collaborating? Really, the big shift instructionally in social studies is a move from traditional instruction to inquiry-based learning. And inquiry-based learning really capitalizes on the curiosity that our students bring to the classroom. While the teacher may provide sort of an umbrella, big idea, big question, a lot of the work and exploration and discovery of knowledge comes through the ideas and questions that our students bring forward. Some of the things, wow, I'm sorry, the formatting of that really got a little funky when it presented, but some of the things our students will engage in as they participate in this work could be case studies, hands-on labs, investigations, action research, student-designed projects, service projects, student activism, and what we saw right here with our student speakers, and field work. All of that, if you think about QUAD D in the rigor and relevance framework, is exactly what QUAD D is. Engaging with knowledge and content, but in ways that are new and different and are relevant to our kids. There we go. So in that adaptation, you have informed action, you have presentation, you have project design, and you have research. So for instruction, particularly specifically to social studies, you'll see us shifting away from an emphasis simply on what and when in social studies to a deeper examination of why. Why did things occur? How does it impact our society? And how do we take what we know and learn in order to improve our future? So as the work was launched at the beginning of last year, it's involved 36 teachers, all 12 of our buildings that are K-12, eight specialists, and by specialist, I mean EL teachers, special education teachers, reading specialists. We had six coaches, six department chairs, and four assistant principals who were involved. And these are a listing of their names, so I'd like to just take a moment to give them a lot of credit. They participated in a lot of deep learning last year and then transitioned into the actual work of curriculum development.
The work of developing new social science standards began nationally in 2010. As the English Language Arts Standards changed, the Council Chief State School Officers commissioned this work to bring together the social science standards with the English Language Arts standards and to be a little bit more inclusive. The groups that were represented, including all the national organizations for the areas of social science, including history, geography, civics, and economics, but also organizations such as the Smithsonian Institution, the Federal Reserve Bank, Library of Congress, and the list goes on. Even the American Bar Association had reps in the civics conversations, as well as universities like Harvard, Vanderbilt, Michigan, Ohio State, et cetera. It was a comprehensive list of folks from across the country in many different disciplines, both education and then more practical disciplines, to put together this framework of what students should know when they graduate from high school. And as Dr. Henderson mentioned, it is focused around inquiry, the idea that a student can ask a critical question and evaluate something for themselves. You know, with the inundation of social media and, you know, even networks which can sometimes present, you know, news from a very particular point of view, it was felt that this is something that's important, the idea to be able to tease out truth where it lies.
And how do we take what we know and learn in order to improve our future? So as the work was launched at the beginning of last year, it's involved 36 teachers, all 12 of our buildings that are K-12, eight specialists, and by specialist, I mean EL teachers, special education teachers, reading specialists. We had six coaches, six department chairs, and four assistant principals who were involved. And these are a listing of their names, so I'd like to just take a moment to give them a lot of credit. They participated in a lot of deep learning last year, and then transitioned into the actual work of curriculum development.
The work of developing new social science standards began nationally in 2010. As the English Language Arts Standards changed, the council chief state school officers commissioned this work to bring together the social science standards with the English Language Arts standards, and to be a little bit more inclusive. The groups that were represented, including all the national organizations for the areas of social science, including history, geography, civics, and economics, but also organizations such as the Smithsonian Institution, the Federal Reserve Bank, Library of Congress, and the list goes on. Even the American Bar Association had reps in the civics conversations, as well as universities like Harvard, Vanderbilt, Michigan, Ohio State, et cetera. It was a comprehensive list of folks from across the country in many different disciplines, both education and then more practical disciplines, to put together this framework of what students should know when they graduate from high school. And as Dr. Henderson mentioned, it's focused around inquiry. The idea that a student can ask a critical question and evaluate something for themselves. You know, with the inundation of social media and, you know, even networks which can sometimes present, you know, news from a very particular point of view, it was felt that this is something that's important, the idea to be able to tease out truth where it lies. And so this arc of inquiry was created in order to try and address all the different areas of social science when looking at a topic. First, asking, using, grounding things in questions, because students retain more if they are doing the investigation for themselves and have an inherent need to find the answer when they're invested in it. Applying disciplinary content, the disciplines being against civics, economics, geography, and history, being able to evaluate the quality of sources, and then communicating their findings and/or taking informed action based on what it is that they find. One particular example, if, let's say you wanted to use the Great Recession in the last 10 years as an example of how you might look at inquiry, you might ask the questions in civics, you know, how have political parties responded to the Great Recession? And what disagreements do political parties have? That could be your civic engagement piece. Economics, economists might say, you know, what were some of the economic causes? How do we indicate its severity? And what are some possible solutions to the Great Recession? In terms of geography, you might ask, how did the Great Recession affect different areas of the United States? Did it create movements of people from one place to another, and how might that look? And then history might look and say, how bad was the Great Recession and compare us to earlier events? You know, what other lessons have we learned from other economic downturns that could be applied to this? So, the idea is that you may have one event, but it can be looked at through multiple lenses. Our themes for social science incorporate all four of those areas equally. What we've found in doing an analysis of our curriculum is, our social science curriculum is very heavy on the history, and did not incorporate a lot of economics, did not incorporate a lot of geography. Geography was especially light. So careful attention was paid in looking at the themes to build units that would be more well-rounded. In grades one through five, the themes that have been developed start off with our community. And for example, in grade two, one of the communities that look at the history of, the economics of, the geography of, is Elmhurst. And they actually spend some time looking at local resources. As they get older, they start to work towards the larger United States, and then also towards the world. Again, these inquiry standards are founded in these four areas, and we try to create a balance of each. Starting in sixth grade, we'll be rolling out the first of our new curriculum, for example, at the middle school, and that's going to be United States history. Now, United States history was traditionally taught in grade seven and eight, and what that led to was a logjam of United States history, where we would have between grade seven and grade 11, three of the five years of social science were all US history, and another semester was United States civic government. It's a very myopic view of social science, looking just at the United States, and, you know, just at, you know, just at it from a historical lens. So, that unit was moved forward, US history was moved forward, and then the incorporation of world history in seventh grade, going into geography, I'm sorry, world history in eighth grade, going to geography in ninth grade, being able to cycle through and look at things from a different perspective. But to give you an example, Unit Two, which is second quarter of grade six, how it looks, covers the Revolutionary War to the Civil War. So from a historical perspective, they will still learn about the major events, their causes, and their impact. So for example, the Louisiana Purchase, individuals like Andrew Jackson and Thomas Jefferson. From a civics perspective, they'll look at political viewpoints and beliefs that grounded, for example, westward expansion. They look at the Missouri Compromise of 1820, the Compromise of 1850, and how those failed to resolve the underlying crises that would lead to the Civil War, and the people that were involved, and how the politics worked out where they could not solve that problem. The economics of the westward expansion, that included things like the establishment of townships, and, you know, how farmland was given out, and where, how, you know, why particular, certain areas grew enough where others didn't, and geography. You know, as cities were established, they were establishing their waterways. Why is that? Well, you're moving large amounts of grain or resources. There was a massive migration of not only Europeans moving west, but also the displacement of Native Americans. So, that one unit is going to touch upon those four areas of social science, and do so in such a way where it is not necessarily the same traditional US history course that we had. It's also worth mentioning, too, the human geography at the ninth grade level will be doing the same. Those units are a little bit more prescribed, we not have to develop those. College Board, of course, gives us those units as, and suggested syllabi in preparation for their exam in the spring. This is going to be a great opportunity, though, for our AP kids, for our students that are in that AP program to begin earning credit their freshman year for college.
Okay, so now let's talk a little bit about K-5. One of the differences for curriculum teams as they are working at the elementary level compared to the secondary levels, that our secondary teachers have a specialization in social science. Our elementary teachers teach every content area every day, and don't always have that specialization. So it can be a little bit more difficult as we're looking to completely develop new curriculum from the very beginning. As we have started to look at that rollout, and we think about the tremendous shifts in instruction, moving really away from a focus on content, and really looking at process and inquiry-based learning, we believe we need to take a step back and slow down a little bit. Originally, our plan was to fully implement next year at K-5, and we have made the decision that we want to slow down. Though, the trade books are still on the resource list to approve for display, because we want to be able to do some piloting and exploration with some of our teachers who have been on the curriculum team. So by doing that, by slowing down, we will really be able to bring work that's very meaningful, and done very thoughtfully and intentionally, which is what our teachers want to do when they sign up to be on these curriculum teams, versus just saying that we're done, and possibly having a product that really doesn't meet the needs of all of our kids. The other reason why we think it's a good time to capitalize on that is the work that we're doing with innovation. As you've listened to us talk about inquiry-based learning, what I can tell you is, that can take a longer time in the classroom than if you're just simply delivering content and getting through things. So, to really make the most of every minute of that instructional day, we have to capitalize on integrating content areas, so that we're not having social studies isolated in this chunk of time, and literacy chunked, and isolated in this chunk of time, but really find ways to bring them together. That way, we really can provide experiences for kids to dive deep into content, and they're really hitting on all the standards across all the content areas. So that's where we're looking to go with social studies at the elementary level. What that will mean is the change protocol that we do for our big changes will have to be adjusted and reviewed with those curriculum development teams. So, that's something that after tonight's meeting, I'll be reaching out to the elementary team and bringing them in after spring break, so we can go through all of those changes and see who wants to pilot, how we want to do that, how we can bring in some other resources to look at that would provide our teachers an opportunity to not start from scratch, but to really look at some of the good work that's out there that has already taken into account, the vertical articulation, and our teachers can focus on really customizing it to the needs and expectations for our students. This is just one example. I always like to try and throw kid, a kid reference in there to remind us who we're serving, but this is just some work by some of the teachers on the curriculum team, as they went back and have been trying some of these different inquiry-based activities with kids. So you can see, the kids down here are around what makes a good citizen, and they are almost like the thought exchange survey, but old-school on the whiteboard. They're looking at each other's comments, adding to them, you know, commenting on them. And then here, they're doing a review of just some current event text, and engaging in what's more like a Socratic seminar. And then you can see some activities in that upper right-hand picture where they've got their digital tools out. They've done some idea collection on the board you can see with the Post-Its. So in terms of the timeline, we are over here with 1819, where we've been developing curriculum. As we move into 1920, the implementation and pilot. High school in grade six will be implementing continued development at grade seven, eight, and then some pilots and continued development at K-5. So with that, we'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Karen?
I have several questions. One is, how does this compare to what other districts are doing?
So, other districts are in similar stages, where everyone is trying to make the shift to these new standards, and really focus on process and inquiry and deep thinking. So I would say districts are in different places, depending on, did they jump to science first and have implemented that, and they've put social studies off, or did they do social studies first? It sort of depends on where their curriculum cycles have been.
Well, but the core content of what Mark was talking about, and what we're covering at what grades, is that similar?
That would vary by district. They wouldn't necessarily approach it, not everyone approaches it the same, but we really do believe that not having that heavy concentration of US history in those years of high school, and spreading it out, and weaving in world history is going to give our kids a better
Can you give us a sense about the inquiry-based learning? It's kind of a new concept, and so can you help us understand what the foundation is that the teachers are providing for the students, so it's not, we're going to do this new inquiry base, and here's the question, as Mark gave us a lot of, you know, examples, which is great, and then how do the students know that foundation of what to do and how to proceed, and make sure that it's on target versus just their intuition about how they would go approach it?
Okay. So, inquiry-based doesn't mean you're off on your own, just doing whatever you want. So in that picture example, in the right-hand corner, so kids are doing some inquiry and exploration about citizenship, but that is being guided by the teacher. So, as kids are generating questions and ideas, that teacher is focusing and sort of guiding them down that pathway to get to some overall questions, and essential questions that have been outlined and developed by the curriculum team, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but this is the new concept, the inquiry-based learning, at all of our grades, right?
At all of our grades, and also very similar to science as well. And Dave Beatty will be here next month to talk about science, but it's very similar in science where you're not announcing you are going to do this lab today to learn this, you're presenting kids with a phenomenon, and they are uncovering the concepts. So it is very different, very different for kids and for teachers.
So let's use that example, at the high school, science.
All right. I'm going to pull in our high school science expert.
So because this is a relatively new concept that we're rolling out, does the teacher then first, in the very beginning of the science curriculum then, go through, here's the process that we do inquiry-based, and here are the steps and the pieces to build that foundation?
Students are naturally inquisitive. You know, there are, you know, there's a curiosity there, and simply, it's not something you have to train them in, it's just simply asking the right question and lighting the fire. You know, if the idea is that, you know, I, you know, how does something float? I have a thing of water, and I drop a block in it, and it's either going to stay at the surface, or it's going to sink. All right, I give you a piece of foil, we're going to make a little boat out of it, and how many pennies can we put in that foil boat until it sinks? All right, let's look at it, you know, did you notice anything? What did you notice? And if you ask the right questions, you drive the children towards, well, when I put the pennies in the boat, the water level rose. All right, now why did the water level rise? And you start, you start asking questions and driving in that direction. As a parent, maybe you do this with your children, right? Sometimes it's like, well, why did this happen? You know why it happened, but you, they probably know why too, it's just a matter of getting them to articulate it by asking the right questions. It is the art of teaching that comes into play. And, but, you know, even with social science, you can start, you ask the questions to drive the conversation in a particular direction, and children will get to the same point. They will get to that point. So, if you're presenting them with a phenomena in science, or with an event in history, you can still ask the questions that bring them to that point, and there are a tremendous amount of resources out there that, you know, where these compelling questions do, you know, you can find them, get your hands on them, and they're being put into all the unit designs that we are coming up with.
But what I will say is, as you can imagine, there's a significant amount of professional learning that has to go into that. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, certainly our CDT members at both science and social studies have gone through that, but that is part of our professional learning plan for next year, for those teachers who are shifting in those content areas.
Okay, so we already had professional development for those students in the high school.
Teachers.
Teachers, correct, for science, for this whole methodology.
Yes, our teachers who are working on the curriculum went through it before they started that work, and then that's carrying over as they're piloting it in the actual classrooms. You're welcome.
Margaret?
I'm going to go back global for a second, and with the proposed implementation of the social studies curriculum, I'm wondering, since we've done a couple of these in the past, what are some of the lessons learned that we can apply to this implementation?
So I think as we've looked at previous curriculum development processes, one of them is, I don't think that we have to always invent the wheel, we just don't need to. There are really good resources by people who have a full-time job writing curriculum, and while we will always want to customize things to meet the needs and expectations for our students and our community, I think we need to take advantage of professionals who have looked at vertical articulation, who have looked at integration of standards. Now, having said that, where, when I talked about it elementary, where we really want to focus on integration across content levels, that's where we would really take a resource apart and customize that for us, so that we can cross it over into ELA, into science, and into really everything, writing. So for me, that is our biggest takeaway.
Chris?
A couple of questions. One, you know, I think you're right, I mean, this method of learning isn't new to the scene, because I remember 10 to 12 years ago, talking to a guy who started a company, a science, set of science academies around that, because he said science wasn't fun. You know, you watch a leaf fall out of the tree and say, why did it fall? Then you get into photosynthesis and things like that, that, so, you know, it's been around for a while, it's great to see it, because I do think it engages kids. But what's, so what's the, I think Karen was asking something along these lines, what's the classroom day look like then? I mean, is there a pre-read of content before you come in to help kind of prime the pump, or is it something done after? How does the resource interact with the inquiry?
So, do you want?
You know, it can be both. Sometimes you'll have, you can present, let's say, if you're a teacher, you're studying an event in history, let's say you talk about the Civil War. Frederick Douglass wrote a letter to Abraham Lincoln, and I saw once a teacher present the handwritten letter, obviously a duplicate, to the students, and, you know, in cursive, where he talks about, where Frederick Douglass talks about, and first of all, students reading, you know, 19th century cursive is a challenge in and of itself, but in the note to Abraham Lincoln, it says, you are fighting the South with one hand, unleash that black hand. And so, what are they talking about? You read that first, what does he mean? Trying to build a context, talk with a neighbor, you know, construct meaning out of it, dig a little deeper. And, you know, it was, he was trying to convince him to form black regiments to fight in the Civil War for the Union against the Confederacy. And, you know, then it leads to the relationship that those two men had, and his speaking at the dedication of the Lincoln Memorial in, you know, 1879. So, there's a way of presenting these, you know, these resources, sometimes these readings, in front of them, and then digging for a context. Other times, you ask the questions, and then they find those readings to build the context. So it really is a, you know, whether it's deductive or inductive reasoning, it's still, it's just two sides of the same coin.
So what's assessment look like then?
Very open-ended. It's generally going to be, you know, essay presentations, could be making videos, you know, so.
Not multiple choice?
Not multiple choice, no. And I would say the other, the other piece, to give you a sense of how they interact, so with the human geo course, it's an interdisciplinary course with their English. And so one of, one of Mrs. Tamaru, the Director of Literacy, who's working with our department chairs, one of her non-negotiables is similar text. So that, that letter may be part of English while they're analyzing the text and pulling out the textual evidence and things, and then referencing back when they get to their social studies course, and what was the implication from that perspective.
Let me give you a
Let me give you just a quick blast on how I could see some of these different concepts being integrated in an approach to developing units. So we talk about the rigor relevance framework and we say that in Bloom's New Taxonomy, that creativity is the highest, you know, the highest form of rigor. And so if you took a look in Eric Schenningler's book, he was at the high school today, he's trying to get us to leverage technology at the high school to get to that higher order thinking. And so with the technology committee, as we talk about the professional learning piece, we theoretically could talk about tying that into assessment by assessing the six Cs, AIE creativity, to get to higher levels of rigor by using technology. So where the kid's assessment is actually maybe they're creating something to demonstrate their knowledge instead of just regurgitating rote information. So that's the type of way we want to try to get all of this to work together.
But I guess I'm just trying to be sensitive to how kids prepare and as, I mean, this sounds great, but as you move along, you know, what was that unit, you know, three weeks ago and I got an assessment or a test coming up and how do I prepare?
So the goal really ultimately is that you move away from these large summative tests.
Sure.
These final tests and that kids are demonstrating their knowledge as they go or there might be a culminating project, but it's not the same process as spending a week every night cramming for an hour for a test that you know is coming up on Friday.
So not a lot of quizzes, a lot of assessment of their critical thought as they go along?
Yes.
Which sounds great, although I will ask one test question, where does the Constitution test end up then?
Oh, where is the Constitution test?
It still falls in civics.
Eighth grade? Seventh?
That would be moved up, it'll probably be in seventh.
Seventh grade, okay.
Actually, I think it's seventh grade now. It is in seventh now.
I'm sorry.
My kids are older now.
Yeah. Once they pass it, you forget about it. Yep.
Just wanted to ask a couple of things. One, as this is being developed, are you doing the standard, like incorporating the standards-based grading right into this and almost as part of the objectives then or?
So we're really looking at narrowing down the standards to what are those critical standards that will become the reporting standards for those courses? And from there you can start to develop the proficiency scales, which really help teachers determine whether or not kids are showing mastery. So that comes in right as part of the process. When you have that, then you can start to look at what will be an effective assessment of that learning. The other thing I want to mention, as Mark talked a little bit about resources, something I'm excited, our sixth grade course is looking at as a supplement to their work, we have a vendor that provides, will provide up to five articles a week at three different reading levels that will really start to make that content accessible to all of our kids.
And then just kind of a comment, the slide that has like kindergarten, grade one, grade two, grade three, that's a great slide, I think, to have accessible to parents when all this rolls out, just to see the progression of what your kids, I mean, you don't, you know, you don't necessarily have to go down into the details.
You don't have to do a deep dive, right.
But just to get the overview of what they're studying each year and I think that's a great perspective that if we could keep that available somehow after.
Sure. Yeah, as soon as we roll out the new website and, I know that's part of our learning and teaching goals for the summer is to really kind of overhaul our section. And I agree, I think especially when you're in a unit district, it really gives you that nice perspective of how you start out as five and six-year-olds and where that takes you as you go through the progression.
Well, and it's really, it's just simple.
Yes.
But, you know, so yeah, so anyway, just side comment. Okay, thank you. If anybody else has anything?
I do stand corrected, it's quarter one, sixth grade, Constitution test.
Sixth grade?
You know what, they're coming off fifth grade, doing US history too. Woo! It's all downhill after that then.
Don't tell the kids that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is the data warehouse, Mary Ann.
I'm here just to provide a brief update on the data warehouse. So I just want to start with talking about why do we, why are we talking about a data warehouse? And then specifically why this particular one? What does it do? What can it do for us? And then a promise that I have made to everybody that I have shared this presentation with so far. So you have, you know this, this slide, just to get specifically to where the data warehouse fits within our learning and teaching priorities, again, this is the piece related to measurement of our district vision and really making sure we have a system to be able to do that. So why are we talking about a data warehouse? When you ask any staff people, what are the kind of data that you're interested in looking at for students or really anything about their students? What you typically, typically get is a, is a long list of places that they have to go to look for different kinds of information. So for example, if they want to look at students' grades, they look in Power School, which is our student information system. If they want to look at test scores, they got to go to a bunch of different systems where a bunch of different test scores are housed. If they want to look at information about student behavior or discipline, some of that information is in Power School, some of it resides in a different system called Swiss and you get the picture, there are a lot of different systems. And in fact, a lot of data is also simply stored in Google. So we have a lot of spreadsheets floating around with a lot of different kinds of information. And so the main purpose of the data warehouse is to help us bring some of that information together in a way that makes it accessible and hopefully actionable for, for staff, including staff at the district level as well as at the school level. So how did we get to this particular data warehouse? This is just a reminder, back in last July, I think I talked about this when we were talking about adoption of the, of the warehouse, but just as a quick reminder, we back last December, January ran a request for information. We got a number of different proposals from vendors. We vetted all those proposals. We also looked at a bunch of other systems. I think in total, there were like 17 different systems that, that we looked at because we were trying to combine sort of the best of lots of, of different worlds. We had a small advisory committee come together, review those, review those systems and give us their input on what they thought would be workable. We came to you in July and you approved us entering into a contract with the vendor to provide those, those services. And since then, we got the contract signed and we have been working with them to integrate a number of these different data systems as well as to kind of start setting up and getting in a bunch of our historical data, setting up forms and things that we will need in order to be able to use this moving forward. The reason that we ultimately, or one of the reasons that we ultimately decided to go with this particular system is that it gives us a number of different elements that we were looking for. And I'm going to show you a little bit about this, but one is a student profile. So this is just a way that you can look at an individual student and you can very quickly gather up a bunch of different kinds of information about that student, which is quite useful if you're trying to make some judgments or, or take some actions with respect to a student. There are reports, so there's a reporting function, which every data warehouse has, so that isn't anything special about this one. What's nice about this one is that any user can create their own report, so it's not just canned reports, you can create what you want. It allows us to create and administer assessments, so that, that functionality currently resides in a different system. So one of the reasons we chose this one is that it gives that, gives us that functionality and allows us to discontinue the previous system and creating some efficiencies and saving us some, some money over the, over the long term. This system will also enable us to track intervention data, which is a, one of those ones that we currently are tracking mostly in spreadsheets, so it's difficult to sort of systematically keep track of. This system has a forms function, which is sort of like Google Forms, but what's nice about that is if we need to collect different kinds of data that we haven't thought of yet, we have a way in which we can do that. It also has some visualizations, a way to sort of put information together in, almost in an online report. And it has some functions related to alerts and notifications. So if there's some particular data point you're interested in, for example, if you're trying to track attendance really closely and you want an alert, if something, you know, goes up or below some particular number, you can set up that kind of alert for yourself. So that's kind of the very fast and broad overview of some of the functionality. There's a link here for some kind of slides that, that show you a little bit of that. I thought I would show you just three pieces of the system really fast, so we're, we're going to go live here, we'll see how that goes. So this is a demo site, so nothing here is real, so don't worry, we're not showing any, any real student data here. So the, the one piece that I mentioned that I wanted to just show you real quick is the student profile. So as a district-level administrator, for example, I can see all the students in the district, any teacher can see their students, any principal can see all the students in their particular school. But on the student profile, what you'll see is these tabs that just allow you to get information quickly about a student. So on the academics tab, you can see information about a student's grades, their course grades, you can see their assignments, assuming that information is being captured from Power School or other systems. You can quickly get to all their test scores here. If there are online tests that we would be doing in the system, those would be here as well. You can get their attendance information, you can get behavior information, you can get whatever custom information you may have created, you can track their intervention information. So it just really puts it all together in a way that, that I hope will be helpful to folks. The other piece that I thought I'd just show you real quick is interventions. So this allows us essentially to create an intervention. So we say what are the things that we're doing during the intervention and then what you do is you actually assign students to that intervention. And then what, what the system does is it just enables you, it sort of creates the buckets for the information that you want about that, about that intervention. So it will have all the information about the intervention, it will have a place for you to collect your information, whatever it hap, this, this is a made-up one about math fluency. So you can see they're tracking, I don't, some information about how students are doing on a particular assessment. It would show you all the data about related indicators that you might want to be tracking. So if this intervention is supposed to help students do better on a benchmark assessment or something, you could track that information in the same spot as well. You can see all the students in a summary stage and so on. It's got some visualizations, if you want to sort of see how things look, you can look at it that way. A lot of possibilities. So those are the two pieces I was going to, actually I'll show you one more thing, which is where we started, which is, this is the dashboards, what they call the dashboards. And so this is where you can actually visualize some of the data. So if you have particular assessments you want to be looking at, anyone can create their own dashboard. We can also create dashboards and push them out to folks. So if we want them to be looking at some specific set of data, we can push it out to folks. That's it for my, that's my demo. I have one more slide.
Okay.
If you can throw that back up there. I closed it here, did I do something bad? Oh, no, okay, I'm good. So in terms of where we are with this, I mentioned right now where we really are is kind of in the data integration phase and importing of old data and also development of some initial documentation. I have done some small trainings with just sort of targeted groups of staff that I want to get in there and, you know, sort of start trying out some things so that they can get comfortable and we can learn like where there's some things we need to work out with the vendor. So that's what we've been working on with some of those folks. Over the summer, the goal will be to have trainings available for any staff who wants to come to them and we'll make also some videos and online materials available. There is some assessment work that we will need to do to kind of get the system up and ready for next year, so we'll be working on that as well. And then next year, we'll kind of hit the ground running at the beginning of the year with some training and, but I don't anticipate, one of the challenges of the system is that it has a lot of elements to it and you really need to actually be trying to accomplish something specific in order to make the information stick. That is what I have learned so far. So we're going to sort of do it in a modular way and so if you're trying to create an intervention, for example, though, you know, there'll be a training about interventions, there'll be a training about assessments and so on. And those will kind of be on demand so people can look at them whenever they want. And I anticipate we'll just have to kind of also, you know, be working with the schools on an individual basis as things come up and, you know, we'll, we'll work it that way. What I have said to everyone is that I guarantee you this system is not going to be perfect. The good news is that the vendor is very willing to work with us to make modifications and help us to get the system to do what we want it to do. So that is, that is one benefit of this particular vendor. But I know that we're going to find things that we need to fix and, you know, we will, we will work hard to fix those as quickly as we can and make the system really, really meet our needs. So I'm excited, I think it will offer us some great opportunities and it'll be up to us to, to really take advantage of them. That's it.
Okay, questions or comments?
Thank you, Mary Ann, this was really good. So first question is, who compromise, who are the people in the advisory committee that did the review or are part of your team?
It was a mix of people, so we had some coaches, some teachers, we had, let's see, one principal, psychologists, I think we had, we had a couple of deans. Yeah, we had, I don't remember the entire list, but I have it if you're, if you are interested in it.
Just trying to get a sense of various different groups that are going to use the data or that spend a lot of time putting data together to help our students. And so, you know, that was really the bigger, you know, the first question. Because this system seems to be, it's nice to have a system to do the work that's kind of manually intensive, that teams of people spent a lot of time on before you arrived. And so, you know, your objective to put a system together like this is great. It's good to see this. So I guess the, the pieces that I'm thinking about is, I'd like to know, and it doesn't have to be answered today, because I didn't ask you ahead of time, is, you know, what's the feedback from these users? Is it, is it offloading some of those tasks so that they can actually be doing the job that we hired them to do, but that it's important for them to have the data in order to target what they're doing?
Yeah. No, I think that's a, it's a really good question. I mean, I'm getting feedback as people are in the system now and they're like, wait, I can't find this or how do I do this? And so, you know, those are kind of more one-off things, but I do think, and I had planned to do some kind of feedback more broadly, I think around the system next year as more people are really engaged with it.
I just want to emphasize too that the data warehouse is, I think you could tell a lot more functional than when we had a lot of parallel systems. But in order for our PLCs to truly come to fruition, we needed better data capabilities and, and, you know, this goes hand in hand with looking at our assessments, but the ability for teachers to be able to access data in this way is going to help strengthen the PLC process. I think it's also going to help us analyze our interventions, which is something that, that you know is a priority. But through the process of taking a look at implementing consistent MTSS processes across the district, which is something you're going to hear us talking about a lot more, this is, this is, this tool will help us be able to do that work a lot, a lot better, I think. So it fits into a lot of our things that we're trying to do related directly to student growth. It's not just like a, you know, an improvement because it's some type of version 3.0 of something, it will help us do the work better.
So what you're trying to do is integrate data from various different systems to provide the appropriate information for our employees to target work with the students?
Yes.
So that's great, that it's all, you know, that you're trying to get systems integrated. The piece that I would also be curious to hear in future time is how much of data entry is done by the staff or how much can be populated systematically, if possible?
Yeah, we, we will definitely automate as much as we can, especially data that are coming from outside systems, but on something like an intervention, for example, you know, those are data that somebody has to collect and, and input somewhere. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, approval board meeting minutes. First up is the approval of February 26, 2019 and March 11. First up is the approval of February 26, 2019, and March 11, 2019 minutes. Does anyone have any changes? Okay, then those minutes stand as presented. Second, approval of February 26, 2019, and March 11, 2019, closed session minutes. Those stand as presented as well. All right, superintendent's agenda, consent agenda? Can I have a motion?
I move that we, that the board approve the superintendent's consent agenda. It's contagious. Items A through I.
I'll second.
Okay, go ahead. Mrs. Steffen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absent, motion passes. Next is superintendent's agenda action items. First up is approval of intergovernmental agreement with the city of Almhurst. The board is not ready tonight to take action on the Stormwater TIF intergovernmental agreement. However, the district has made an informal proposal to the city in order to settle the final details, and will be formalizing the proposal very soon. We hope to be able to complete the negotiations and approve the intergovernmental agreement next month. We will move on the agenda to item B, approval of agreement with Local Number 73 Service Employees International Union.
So if there are any questions about this, after we make a motion, I would direct those to Chris. But we have reached an agreement with our custodians and would recommend that we approve that agreement.
Any questions, comments? Motion, yep.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Local Number 73 Service Employees International Union.
I second.
Any questions, comments? Yeah, could Chris give an overview?
So as always, we try to negotiate an agreement that keeps our expenditures in line with our revenue streams. And in this case, we were, we have salary increases of 2.1 for next year, 1920, which is the CPI, and 1.9 for 1920, which is the CPI. And then for '21, '22, that will be CPI as well when we, when that comes out next January for the '21, '22 school year. So those are the salary increases. On the health insurance front, we kept all the premium contribution rates the same as it was in the previous contract. We were, we did lower the HSA contributions. Only one custodian currently is enrolled in that plan. And we added a provision to try and increase wellness screening participation. On the retirement, we did do a early retirement incentive clause, which is a post, for eligibility purposes, they need, to be eligible, you need to have 20 years of service in District 205 and be at least 55. And that is a post-retirement payment of $500 per year of service in the district. Sick days, we have 12 days similar to the other groups. We modified somewhat our stipends for highly qualified maintenance staff. And we have a little bit more flexibility in the day shift maintenance hours. That really summarizes the provisions in the contract.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Thank you for doing that. All right, go ahead. Mrs. Steffen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absent, motion passes. Item C, approval of FTEs to allow for appropriate staffing for 2019, 2020.
So every year at the March board meeting, in order to comply with the provisions in the school code, as far as notifying staff of their employment status, we bring our staffing recommendation to the board. And at this point, we are able to bring something forward that involves a .503 full-time equivalent teacher increase of, which includes some considerations at various grade levels across the district. We have 100 more students at York High School anticipated next year. We have some increases in some special learning populations. We also have some other areas where we don't need quite as much staff, so it's a comprehensive district-wide increase of .503 FTE. However, as part of this recommendation, we're also asking that we are allowed a contingency up to 7.5 additional full-time equivalent teachers. And the reason for that is that we are, you know, this is kind of the preliminary phase of staffing. There are some things that could evolve across the district, including some final recommendations through the special ed program analysis. And so we would like not to be able to have to come back to the board every board meeting if some of those things evolve to ask for additional FTE. So we're asking for a consideration of a contingency not to exceed 7.5 FTE as part of this recommendation. And Dr. Wohl would be able to give any additional specifics that you might have as well if you would require further discussion or be interested in further discussion after we make the motion.
Could I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve an increase of .503 FTE for the 2019, 20 school year, as well as a contingency of 7.5 FTE should it be necessary.
I second.
Questions or discussion? I think that that was pretty thorough. Nothing, okay. All right, go ahead. Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Four ayes, no nays, three absent, motion passes. Item D, approval of resolution authorizing notice of nonrenewal to non-tenured teachers other than final-year probationary teachers.
I think just for clarity purposes, it would be good if this interests the board for Dr. Wohl to explain what each of these items are. So for item D, if you would like to explain what that actually means, and then same for the next one when we get there, please. Okay, all right, that's fine. Go ahead, do them both. That's fine. All right.
The two resolutions before the board tonight, the first one, an item D, relates to teachers that do not have tenure or continued contractual service with the district, who are being released from their positions due to performance concerns and are not being asked back. So that's what this resolution is. The second resolution, item E, the honorable dismissal of teachers, this applies to our teachers who are hired here part-time. They do not have tenured status, and we typically release them if we aren't sure whether or not we are going to have a position available for them in some capacity the following year. Our goal is to always bring people back that have done a good job if they were hired as a part-timer. We like to bring them back if we can, either to a part-time or a full-time position. There is no negativity associated with this release, and we look to try to hire them back as positions become available.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Sure. I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing notice of nonrenewal to non-tenured teachers other than final-year probationary teachers.
I second.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, go ahead. Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Four ayes, no nays, three absent, the motion passes. Do I have a motion for item E, approval of resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers.
I second.
Any questions, discussion? Yeah.
I'd just like to reiterate, Dr. Wohl said that this is necessitated by the way certain contractual agreements are written and certain state law or statutes require. We are in a position where you have to dismiss and then bring back because you don't have the flexibility to dismiss at a later date should you not need. It's a tough way to run an organization, but it's the law that's given to us.
Okay. Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Four ayes, no nays, three absent, the motion passes. Next, item F, approval of boundary recommendation.
So this has been discussed, and this is the approval phase, but this was discussed, I believe, at the, what would it be, February, either the first or second meeting in February, I believe, we discussed this. And so we're asking for approval. I'll read into the record again the details of the recommendation, but if the board does approve this, then we would reconvene the boundary subcommittee, and we would work on developing a communication plan that we would share with the board before we go forward, but that would involve some action steps for how we think we could effectively communicate this to affected areas, involve realtors, make sure that everything is clear. We do have a realtor on this subcommittee, and so she, I think, will be helpful in giving us some ideas about how we can make sure that the community is adequately informed. So the recommended action, that the Board of Education approve the following, effective June 1, 2022, any family that purchases a home on the east side of York Avenue and north side of St. Charles Road and either side of Harrison Street going north to the south side of Butterfield Road will be subject to the five provisions listed below. The new boundary provisions supported by the board include the following. Boundary adjustments will take effect based on purchase date of the home. Home purchased on or after June 1, 2022 will be subject to the new boundaries. Families that purchase their homes prior to June 1, 2022 that live in the affected boundary areas outlined below will have the choice of attending Edison Elementary School or their current school. Families in the current Hawthorne Elementary School attendance area will reside on the east, or who reside on the east side of Kenmore Avenue will attend Edison. Families who reside between the east side of York Road and the west side of Kenmore Avenue that currently attend Hawthorne will have the choice of attending either Hawthorne or Edison. Families living on either side of Harrison Street going north to the south side of Butterfield Road that are currently bused to Jackson will be bused to Edison. Affected families in item four will have their choice of attending either Bryan or Sandberg Middle Schools. No other boundaries across the district are affected, and the rationale for this recommendation is, has been part of the master facilities planning process, which the primary benefits would be to allow all-day kindergarten at neighborhood schools and to achieve more balanced enrollment across the district when it is fully implemented.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the following. Effective June 1, 2022, any family that purchases a home on the east side of York Avenue and north side of St. Charles Road and either side of Harrison Street going north to the south side of Butterfield Road will be subject to the five provisions listed below. The new boundary provisions supported by the Board of Education include the following. Boundary adjustments will take place, affect based on purchase date of the home. Homes purchased on or after June 1, 2022 will be subject to the new boundaries. Item two, families that have purchased their home prior to June 1, 2022 that live in the affected boundary areas outlined below will have the choice of attending Edison School or their current school. Item three, families in the current Hawthorne Elementary School attendance area who reside on the east side of Kenmore Avenue will attend Edison. Families who reside between the east side of York Road and the west side of Kenmore Avenue that currently attend Hawthorne will have the choice of attending either Hawthorne or Edison. Item four, families living on either side of Harrison Street going north to the south side of Butterfield Road that are currently bused to Jackson will be bused to Edison. And finally, item five, affected families in item four will have the choice of attending either Bryan or Sandberg Middle School.
I second.
Discussion, questions? Chris?
I'd just like to reiterate, and thank you for doing this. First off, this map, just for context sake, is the last one we talked to before the referendum, right? I forget what, option D modified.
D modified.
Yes, yeah, it's the exact, yes.
So it's not anything different than, it's just the words without the picture. And we, just to reiterate, we asked you to come up with a solution which did not have any impact on current families, including kids that have yet to be born to those families. And this does that. Correct me if I'm wrong there, but that's the way, you know, I read this. And also, plenty of runway for communicating this and getting this out there so that, so that anybody buying a house in our community has plenty of time to realize exactly where that, where their kids will go to school when they make their life decision there on buying a house. And then it also looks like, you know, you guys went ahead and added some choice to it, too, which I like that, for those in that transition area now, they actually do have the choice to pick. So I think this accomplishes what we asked you to do. It sounds like the committee agreed with that. And I think that the 2022 date is far enough in the future that we do accomplish the runway piece, so I support this.
I also just want to go back. This was quite a conversation. There were many people who attended multiple meetings, had discussions, shared their point of views. This is an example of trying to take in all the different considerations, perspectives, and trying to make a good, sound business decision, and how, once we hear those perspectives, we can operate within those certain parameters. So I am, again, I'm very happy with where we landed. I like the date of the June 1, 2022 for multitude of reasons. Also, the fact that it's talking about purchasing a home, so if you've been in a home and you had all your heart set on going to a certain school, it will allow that. So again, multiple, multiple perspectives met here. So thank you very much to the team that put this together. And again, we need to keep sharing ideals to find possible options. I think creativity was at that highest. That was a big one. I think this is an example where we hit it.
Yes, and I wanted to thank not only the administration, but the community for the patience, because we really needed to hear from the community what the priorities were and what they would tolerate or not. And I know that we had a lot of discussions and kept, you know, repeating some of the scenarios and then providing, you know, multiple options to just see what the, I'll call it the sweet spot was. And so then we got to option D modified, which is this current plan. Thanks, Chris, for saying it's not just the map that we showed in the past, but this actually puts words around it. It was clear, so thank you for all the work to make sure that it was clearer than last time we presented it. And I know that Bavu and I had a brief conversation earlier. And I know that Bavu and I had a brief conversation earlier. The question already that's coming to us is, you know, people are already looking at purchasing homes, and the realtors don't want to get it wrong, so they would like to, if at all possible, have something that helps. I know that we have two boundary maps that are on our website right now, but they're current boundary maps, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, when will the boundary maps be updated? And secondly, is there a possibility to have something that's interactive, that you can put in a home address and it pops up with, this is the school, or these are the options, or something that's really easier to see than trying to get that little address on that map and you can't see it, and you don't want to get it wrong?
Well, absolutely. I think the Board already knows, we've presented that we'll be going live in a few weeks, not even a few weeks, April 1st. It is not a joke. It is coming. The arrival of the new website. So, any tools that we add to that, we certainly want to make sure that that's user-friendly, simple, easy, understandable. Along with myself, Dr. Moyer, Chris Welton, we're all on the implementation committee, and as Dr. Moyer alluded to, I will be sitting down and talking about that communications plan. We have a Realtor on the committee that can certainly advise us on the pluses, the deltas, the minuses of how things have gone before and where a new tool should take us, so all of those things will certainly be considered.
And Mary, too.
Yeah, so the last piece is that I know that we have a Realtor represented on the committee, but we also have a bunch of realtors in the, in the community that we actually invited in and have talked to, and Dr. Moyer have gone out to some of their locations if they couldn't make it into our sessions. But if we could present at a board meeting too, I think it would be helpful as to what our communication plan is, you know, how do we reach them?
It probably will actually go beyond presenting at a board meeting and bringing them in, showing them how to use the tools, so forth and so on, so we'll make sure we'll be thorough and the Board will be updated on what we're doing.
Thank you.
I just, you know, everything, I agree with everything you've all said, and just, you know, the process was very challenging, but we, I feel like we're able to honor the community's values and reflect that while achieving the goals, you know, of helping balance our enrollment and also giving runway, you know, so there's, and there's choice, and I like that, and there's time. So, thank you, because I know it took a lot of work from the administration and some uncomfortable conversations, and I think the end product is a good one, so. All right. Anything else? Okay.
Dr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Four ayes, no nays, three absent. The motion passes. Item G, approval of District 205 Foundation donation funded by 100-plus Women Who Care.
So, this was really impressive day to see this check presented, or the fake check presented anyway, at the high school, and we want to ask you to accept this donation via the Foundation by the 100-plus Women Who Care organization. We used to have an organization called YSET, which helped meet the needs of families that had different considerations, that sometimes compromised their ability to fully support their child's education, and that organization no longer exists. So, this will go a long way towards serving a similar purpose, and the Foundation, which has been extremely supportive, was established in 1988 and has sponsored a variety of different things, and this was something that it chose to support. So, the, the Board has decided to help us in various ways like this before, like Wi-Fi hotspots, like other things like that, so they've kind of made their mission to be innovation, but have also expanded to try to support in other areas where they, they think we might need it. And so, the, this particular donation would support something called Duke Depot, which is a place at the school where there are personal items, clothing, school supplies, and other different types of things available for students who need that type of assistance. So, those populations have grown in our district over the years, and the Foundation Executive Director, who's a member, that's Lisa Finelli, who's a member of this group, they, they decide what organizations they want to support, and they chose to support this particular program at the high school. So, we would recommend that you accept this donation. $14,600 to Duke Depot through the Foundation by the Elmhurst 100-plus Women Who Care.
A motion?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the donation of up to $14,600 for York Duke Depot from the District 205 Foundation, as funded by the Elmhurst 200-plus Women Who Care. Sorry, Elmhurst 100-plus Women?
I'll say.
All right. Any discussion? Well, yeah. I just have to say thank you on behalf of all of us. You know, this is such an example of our community looking out for other members of the community, and so, a special thank you to the 100-plus Women Who Care and also to the Foundation for helping with this donation and the ways that they're helping fill in gaps for students and give them the opportunities to have the best education possible. So, just a thank you to both of those organizations.
Yeah. Just sending out, I just wanted to make sure, a reminder on my, my voting status, I had mentioned in our previous meeting that I would be voting present on all donations that we have for the rest of the year, with the intent of having a call-out so we can come together as a community, as a unit district, to understand how we are going to handle the gifts to the donations, gifts to the district from a unit basis. So, I will be voting present on this, on this donation as well as the ones to follow that. I have done some work to look at what some of the other districts and boards have done, and I will share some of that information in our board communication meeting. This does not take away from the generosity of the community or of the organizations that are providing this. I just think we can continue to improve our processes to make sure we always function as a unit district and move the entire district forward.
We may have, we may have to table these.
The quorum, because a vote of present is considered an absent vote, so that means that we only have three votes.
So, you like a yes or a no?
So, if it was a no vote, then we could go ahead and vote, and it would pass. So, we'll take the vote, and then it'll pass or not pass, I guess. Okay, so I guess we need to table the donation, actually, both sets of donations till we have a quorum. Well, till we have, yeah, till we have enough votes, people to vote, or enough votes to pass it, okay? So, we will table item G, and we will table item H, approval of donations to York, Jackson, and Emerson. And we will move on to superintendent's communication, facilities update.
I don't have much of an update since the last board meeting because we anticipated that we were going to have a meeting with the Bryan and Edison people last week, but that got pushed back to this week. Most of what would be going on with the master facility planning process would be covered in the finance committee report. I did provide some updated dates. I will say that depending on the meeting tomorrow, if this does move along the way we hope, we are still trying to shoot for some board communication in April and some community communication in May where we share the, some draft designs and start to get some feedback, so I'm hoping that we will be able on tomorrow to agree that that is still possible. Tomorrow morning at the Chamber Breakfast, which we're hosting at York, we do have, Todd has some boards of the incubator design, and I guess if we had thought, we could have brought that to the meeting tonight. That's a summer project, it's associated with our facilities upgrades. But the other, the other drawings and things, we're still hoping to unveil later this spring, but we had to push that meeting back a week. So, that's really all I have to say to that, other than what comes out of the finance committee discussion.
I'm sorry, Dave, did you say for the March TBA Bryan-Eddison building team meetings is postponed?
Well, the, the core team meeting with the principals and the architects and the administrators was pushed back from March 13th to March 20th. So, with spring break, the team, the building team level meetings, I don't know if they've set a rescheduled date or a date that that's going to be possible. So, that will hopefully be shortly after spring break in April.
I think the documents posted under this, so finance committee, I was going to go, hey, Dave, you want to talk about this?
Oh, okay.
And I think the documents posted under this item on the agenda with the date, with the upcoming dates that you usually go through, do you just want to cover that now?
Yeah, well, that's kind of what I was referring to, so I'll update what I have on there. So, March 20th is Bryan-Eddison Principals Core Team Meeting. A rescheduled meeting for early April to follow with the building teams, that includes teachers, parents, and a wider swath of people at the buildings. There's a safety committee meeting coming up at 1:00 PM on April 4th. There is a hope that, that it probably can't be April 9th now, but that we could present something publicly at the April 23rd board meeting and possibly individually to board members who would like to have a chance to get acquainted with the concepts prior to April 23rd, a large public meeting, and that would keep the, the progress going to try to have some community presentations of these draft designs. That's really the major work. There are some meetings to be scheduled that I don't believe have been scheduled yet regarding the elementary art coordinator and some site visits for makers spaces and media centers, but those are still in, in the works to be occurring soon this spring before everybody leaves for the summer. Then, once we do that, that's when the people go back to work again and start to work on some of the final design concepts that ultimately the Board would approve, so that we can get the bidding process started and essentially start everything all over again with Lincoln in the fall, as well as the work that would be ongoing, and there will be a presentation in May at the May Board Meeting on the all-day kindergarten proposal. There'll be planning that would need to go forward with that, depending on, you know, where the Board is at with that. And then, there would be a bunch of committees that would start up in the fall related to transition and staffing and other things related to the year, the following year, when the Lincoln students would be moved off-site. So, that's kind of where we are going into the fall.
Anything else on facilities? All right, thanks for that. District Leadership Professional Learning.
We have not updated you on what's been going on in this area for a while, and I just think they've been doing some really good work, and I thought it was time to share and bring people kind of up to speed, and it does relate to the six Cs, and so thematically we're right there tonight.
So, I'm going to take the lead on this one. So, some of the work that we do with our district leadership team, which is comprised of all of our building principals, all of our assistant principals, all of our special ed supervisors, our learning and teaching team, and cabinet. Is that everybody? I think I got everybody. Yes, okay, that's everybody. So, it's a fairly large group, and we come together once a month, and really, under Dr. Moyer's leadership, it's a time for learning for our leaders. We really try and reserve very little of that time for business items and really focus on learning, professional learning. So, this year, we've been focused on the six Cs, really focusing in on three of them, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. Some feedback that we gathered from the team last year was that they really wanted to spend the time that they had together applying learning versus doing the learning. So, in learning and teaching, we changed up how we had been operating the last few years, and when we are focusing, what I, what I included for you in the packet was collaboration, so I'll, I'll use that as an example. When it was time for our leaders to be learning about collaboration in, in the ways we were defining it, we provided the leaders with a set of resources where they could go out and do their learning, and the expectation was they went out and did that on their own, on their own time, and then each of them collected an artifact from their building as to what, what that looks like. So, looking at the learning, getting an understanding theoretically of what it looks like, then going into classrooms and getting a live example of what that looks like. Most of the time, it was a video clip, which they uploaded. We came together then, and in small groups, they worked through a protocol analysis to examine each of the artifacts and really determine where that fell in terms of the definition of collaboration. It served two purposes. One was to deepen their learning, but it also leaves us now with a repository of exemplars that, as we're working with teachers out in the buildings, we can show them what things, what things should look like. So, that would be one month. The next month, they went back with that progression of collaboration, which was one of the handouts that you had, that very dense document that had a lot of words in each of those squares, and walked through classrooms again, trying to look at what we see in place. Then, when we came back together, we created that other document that you have in your packet, which are the learning targets for collaboration, because that first document, that's the learning progression, that's work by Michael Fulon and his team, and we really wanted to break it down for our teachers, so we could say, when you are an EC kindergarten or first-grade teacher, here are the skills that you should be working on, so that by the time our kids go through elementary, middle, and early high school, they are prepared to fully be proficient and demonstrate that competency in collaboration. So, you can see how it really builds upon each level and spells out very explicitly what skills our teachers should be teaching at those levels. This week, I think Dr. Moyer mentioned earlier, some of us in learning and teaching were at the ASCD conference in Chicago, and I was attending a session on professional learning that really aligns with some changes we want to make to our professional learning. So, I went up to, and she said, you know, we've just developed sort of the profile of what we want a graduate to look like, and we're really kind of trying to figure out how to define those skills like collaboration and citizenship. So, I went up to her afterwards and described the work, and she was very excited and is going to be reaching out. So, it's nice to see that the work our leaders are doing really is forward-thinking and future-focused for us.
The only thing I would add to that is that when we get to the areas of character and citizenship and we replicate these activities, the goal is to build that into our social, emotional learning work that we do when we talk about behavioral health, and the further goal is to try to build that into the curriculum and the daily instructional practices and not have that be a standalone type of thing that just gets, you know, 15 minutes a week, we're going to talk about something or whatever. The other thing too, is that now that we have these, I think that this will help us when we get to the assessment pieces where we're trying to develop this graduate profile of what's a college career and life-ready graduate. We have the framework to say if students have evidence of growth in these areas, then they're meeting the six C benchmark. So, I think it's been really good work, learning and teaching adjusted earlier in the year based on some feedback, and ended up coming up with this type of a concept, and I think it's, it's worked well, and I think it'll lead to some... And I think it'll lead to some future, it'll catalyze some future work that we're looking to do, so.
The only other thing I would add is, as our leaders kind of came up with a first draft, we took it then to our district, our DLT Committee, which is made up of a teacher or staff representative from every building. And I asked them to take a stab at it and do some refinement. And then I brought it to the real workhorses, our instructional coaches, and they took our leaders' work and really refined it and put it into the form it looks like now. So it's had a leader perspective, a staff perspective, and now our coaches are taking it and spending the spring, bringing it in when they're working with teachers on coaching cycles to see where, what it looks like as they put it into practice.
I think, you know, so thank you for sharing this. This is great. I can hardly read the font, but that's an aside. I think what I love is I feel like we're really becoming a learning organization where everybody's learning at every level, and that seems to be, you know, what our conversations are about, about learning and how are people learning, how are we assessing learning, you know, what kind of learning is our staff getting to do. And I really like, I mean, I think that is the strength of the organization. And so thank you for your leadership in that and, yeah, leading the conversation.
Anybody else? Karen?
Only thing that I would ask, so this is used for every professional development session when we're bringing our staff in, or?
Tell me more.
I'm just, okay, so this is kind of a platform of what we're trying to do, like Kara said, you know, it's just the way that we're, students are learning and we're teaching. And so I guess I'm thinking, is it kind of a frame of reference every time that somebody's coming in for professional development?
So it's not, it's really about taking this back to the student level in the classroom. So if I am a second grade teacher and I am thinking about a culminating project, I'm not only thinking about the content, but I'm also saying, okay, what are these skills with collaboration that I also want to make sure I'm weaving in and explicitly teaching? So for second graders, one of their targets is that I can work together with my group to complete a task. I will know I have done this when my group has created whatever that task is that reflects everyone's ideas. So it really kind of breaks that down. So if I'm working with second graders, all right, boys and girls, not only are you trying to create a video that shows your knowledge of this habitat, but also remember that to be good collaborators, we need to be able to demonstrate that everyone's ideas have gone into the project and your final product.
So I guess, okay, so this is new, and it's, you know, you've said all the people that are working on it. But then, at the end of the day, it's the teachers in the classroom who are using this. And I guess that's the piece that can you speak to of how we accomplish that with over 600 staff?
Sure.
Well, first of all, let me just start with that. We only have completed this work in its entirety for like one of these. The goal is to have three of them completed by the end of the year. So the principals are just now beginning to take some of these concepts to their building leadership teams, to their school, to their, you know, late arrivals. And also, our coaches are just beginning to use some of these things. But when you, when we talk about, Mary's talking about creating professional learning strands, and I'm thinking maybe you're going to go there a little bit. And also, this will be the type of thing that's built into the mentoring and induction program. It'll be built in to walk through, when we do our instructional rounds. So it's in its, more in its development stage now, but the goal is to systematize that in everything we do.
So I think we would call this the beta testing phase, where the coaches have it in their hands now. And as they're working with teachers this spring, they're seeing how that works to weave that in. But then, as Dr. Moyer said, we're developing kind of a new approach to professional learning for our teachers for next year, where they'll be kind of very focused on an area of implementation. And as part of that learning, they'll be looking at how do they weave in those six Cs and those learning targets.
Tweet of the Week.
Good evening again to the board. Tweet of the Week goes to the Laura Johnson Classroom at Bryan Middle School. Her Twitter handle is @AdventuresinELA, and this tweet really continues on with the six Cs theme that we've had going on all night. The tweet says, "Friye in 7th Grade English Students Presented Their Character Trait Slides To Each Other In Small Groups. After each presentation, they provided feedback to the presenter. It was like a room full of professional business meetings." And it adds Bryan D205, and of course, our hashtag #IgniteD205. And in the pic collage, you can see how they're surrounded in small groups as peers giving feedback as their fellow students present. So, great job to the Laura Johnson Classroom.
Thank you. All right, Board Communications Finance Committee Report. Mr. Bloom?
All right, well, before I start, Shannon left ill, just so anybody wondering. And I'd like to congratulate Dr. Wolf for making it through the meeting. I'm on my last leg as well, so anybody in this room should probably take vitamin C when you get home. We'll try to make this quick. Finance Committee, we met on March 12th at 6:30. Topics, demographic study. So there was some discussion here at the board table that had been referred down to the Finance Committee about the usefulness and utility of a updated demographic study. And we had gone down the road of trying to figure out how to, how to look at the process that we use differently to add local factors to make it more for Elmhurst and rather than just a data exercise. And then also bringing it down from beyond just a zip code to the actual school level, because these things tend to be pretty, pretty good at a district level, but when you get down to the building level, they start to have their issues. And what we're using these things for is more on the building level. So, long story short, you know, Chris Welton did, you know, a bunch of legwork on it, came back with certain proposals, and had asked kind of the question, what else could we add to the data analysis to make it ours? And the answer was really nothing. I mean, the folks from the outside really did not have any suggestions on what to incorporate. So it became very evident that, you know, that any data-based solution would need, if you want local insight, you're going to have to come from the local sources. And Chris, right now, from a statistical standpoint, does a, it's called Cohort Survival Group, which rolls forward the kindergarten class as you roll through, and then based on some historical relationships on where we wash kids out between like, I think, 5th and 6th grade and beyond, he makes his adjustments. And so really, the usefulness, I think, of a survey would be more around kids that were born between, you know, in the last five years, which would give you your kindergarten. But by and large, you're probably going to get somebody sitting in front of a computer grabbing data sources out there and not having any idea who we are. And so I think the recommendation to the committee, from the committee up to the board, is that we didn't find anything that improved our intelligence at this stage right now, and that, well, you should probably keep looking at this process. There wasn't something that made it front burner today. So unless you want to. Unless you want to. Yeah, and then there's a 2020 census that should also add some additional data to those data sets, which may be more valuable in a couple of years when that finally comes out. Anything to add, I think? Facility rental fees, it was our annual, this is the process to update the facility rental usage agreement. Chris has rolled forward fees with basically CPI, slight bumps. That'll come to the board April 23rd, so you'll see the full-blown proposal at that point. There really wasn't much in the way of red lines on it. February Monthly Financial Report, nothing really to report on budget. Let's see, update on York Bookstore. I think, you know, Chris and I have been talking about this for a fair amount of time over the last several months, and it looks like we're going to end up going to RFP for this. Because kind of what Bex does for us is commodity, and even locating books. We kind of separated the management of the bookstore from locating books and making sure that, you know, buying and selling books. And I think we can, we can RFP that. And then we have looked at opportunities from a management standpoint to maybe bring it back internal again, more efficiently, given what they're charging us per person to staff now. So these are things that Chris is continuing to noodle on, but I think the big, you know, the big piece is that, you know, it's not, at one point in time, we thought Bex may be able to stay with us, and they had some unique capabilities, and it justified potentially just continuing along with them. But I don't think that's the way Chris wants to go now. So stay tuned. I think your target is sometime midsummer to bring back some more ideas on where that Update on York Textbooks. So I want to take a second, just, I mean, Mark touched on this earlier, Mark Cohen. He did one heck of a job. We asked him, the question had come up, how can we save our parents' money in the book fees that are out there? And sooner than, I think, anybody in the committee believed possible, Mark was able to go out, and just by virtue of kind of cataloging everything and starting to have discussions, identified some really low-hanging fruit that we hope will save our parents' money this coming fall. And I had not expected something to be implemented that fast, but there were several hardcover textbooks that will be transitioned to electronic copies. Mark's memos is, it does a great better job than I can of summarizing what he did. But I just want to thank Mark for the work that he did in such a short amount of time. And again, understanding also that this is a process which requires, you know, constant updating. It's not a one-time thing as we look at, making sure that when we select text and curriculum, we realize that we don't want to sacrifice curriculum for money. You know, within reason, it's a value question. And so, to the extent that there are opportunities to do open source or cheaper resources, we'd ask the teachers to look at that in the department chairs when they put together their curriculum, with the idea of not going in and dictating what they're going to use, but working collaboratively with them to find something that also recognizes that the parents are picking up the tab for this. So thanks, thanks again to Mark. The memos in the attached to the board docs. Sure.
Yes, so thanks, Mark. We said at the committee meeting, but it's important, how you worked with all the department chairs, not just for the snapshot today, but as, as the departments and staff are looking at bringing new courses and reviewing their curriculum, that they're looking at it, should it be a textbook, should, can it be open source, can it be books online, eBooks, that sort of thing? And so it wasn't just the snapshot, which we've been asking for for quite some time, but you, you were able to organize everyone and get everyone involved with it, which is great for not just today, but moving forward and what that process will be. So thank you.
And one last thing, I think there's, there's three metrics that we're talking about tracking, and it's the, you know, is it the top 10 most expensive books, any books over a certain threshold, and then open source resource usage, just to give us something so everybody knows we're going to be looking at it, which just by virtue of looking at it may drive some behavior. So again, thank you, Mark. Update on capital maintenance projects. So I'm just, I think that, so Todd did a lot of hard work on pulling together a presentation, which, while it's on board docs, really deserves to be here on these screens. And so I talked to Dave and Chris, and it's my bad, because I didn't do it until this afternoon. And rather than try to go through that here, I've asked them to put those up on screen at a future board meeting where we can go through, because there's some really cool stuff that he's doing. In a nutshell, there's summer projects. Each individual project will be brought to us for approval before they start it, but those are all listed, but he can come and explain that. Because there's some diagrams about how Churchville's going to work and things like that, that the whole board does need to see. There's some really cool stuff and work he's done on the innovation space that really does deserve to be in front of the camera here. And then, and then the model classroom and furniture, and talking about creating a consistent palette and a consistent group of furniture, a menu of furniture. So not dictating exactly what goes in a room, but giving teachers options and different pieces and ways to organize the room. And there's some pilots going on now and again. It's too exciting to explain without pictures. So, you know, we'll ask, we'll ask Todd to come, come back at a future meeting and put those up on the screen and explain it to us.
So Todd, or should I, I know that we don't have those presentations, but am I able to inquire about the PTA conversation and explain the prototyping a little bit?
Yeah, you can. I mean, I'll preface that, and then you can add on. I think that David talked to us, and one of the, one of the, one of the goals of the prototyping and creating this standard kind of list of furniture to choose from is so that it's consistent across every building within the district. What it also does is allows PTAs that want to contribute to pick from that list. That said, that list is going to be used at every building, regardless of which building the PTA is. So everybody will have the same choices that they can make. Some of them just may be funded. So if you want to add on to that.
Yeah, thank you. So I'd like to get a response back to the PTAs. And last spring, I told them to put a moratorium on furniture purchases until we can get some type of a prototype of what are the furniture options that we want to support as a district at each grade level span. And the idea being that we then would incorporate that into the construction design process for FF and E, and the, also the furniture replacement cycle for the district. So we would get a lot of it with new furniture, but then, as the buildings would make their requests and we would do our annual budgets, we would gradually move toward that being standardized across all buildings. So similar to what we did with technology, this will allow us a way for some of these people that have an interest in supporting the district to do so and still allow the board to comply with its policy. So now that we have that in place, my request would be to be able to go back to the PTAs and say that if, if your, if your organization is interested in trying to help move this along more quickly at your school, these are your options, and this is what the district would support. So I've been, been trying to get them an answer, and obviously, it's been a lot of work. We had a furniture committee, Todd's been swamped with all different kinds of things, understandably. But now that we have that in place, I'm questioning what type of response I'm able to provide for our support groups who have been asking. Yeah, well, I'd like to have some consensus from the board. I mean, I don't think we need a vote, but I think I need some consensus from the board to know if, if this is, if the board's comfort level is that this type of contribution to the district would be consistent with the way we view donations and also your comfort level, that it would be consistent with our policy. So, you know, there are a lot of the buildings that have kind of been waiting on this, and I just feel like I need to give them some type of a response. And if that doesn't have to be tonight, that doesn't have to be tonight. I just know that if, if these people are looking for ways to support the district and spend down their funds prior to the end of the year, it would, it would be something that we know, that we could say is consistent with where we're moving as a district long term, and therefore, consistent to be considered as a possible donation.
So you're saying that there is a standard for the workspace that will be at every school, every classroom or space, and?
Eventually.
Eventually, yep. And the PTAs can contribute to that, but we also have the resources that we will make it parity across the district.
Correct.
Basically. So would we support that? And would we support the PTAs contributing to that standard?
Chris?
Add one more point of clarification. Eventually means during the course of our facilities renewal plan. So not eventually now, and then the last folks get it seven or eight years from now. It's, this is something we're on our way to over the next five years as we execute our plan. And if the PTAs want to kick in, they may end up with furniture sooner in their buildings. Is that the question?
Well, I don't know, I don't know that I can guarantee you that every classroom in the district would be completely outfitted by the, within the next five years at the duration of this plan, because I don't know that, Chris, is, I don't know that we can guarantee that. All we, all we are saying to the principals, starting as of last week, is as you make your capital requests, these are your models to use. And when you put in for your budget request, this is what you can order. So they will start ordering that. that in their annual cycles. And then, we will start, take a look at our capital budgets over time and, and ensure that that's the standard for the district. But I, I think it would be premature to be able to guarantee that, that that will coincide with the completion of field.
And so, you know, I think in the context of what you're asking, this is more complex than we could do it at the table right now. I think there's a lot of questions running around in the context of equity. I think that, that I conceptually do not have an issue with this at all. But I, I think that there are folks, me included, that would like to see more about how we're going to balance things, you know, with that rollout. And I'm sure you guys have, you know, as you go through the construction process are thinking about these things. But I think that conversation needs to be had in a more complex manner. But again, right, right now, I don't have an issue with it. But I think that there are certain things that need to be fleshed out before you can ask for a full-blown opinion.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just, I just feel that I owe them a response. And so, I will, I'll give them that response. And I guess as, as more details become available throughout the construction planning, maybe we can provide more details to the board when we think things might ultimately be able to be standardized at all, at all buildings across the district.
But I guess my question to you is, is not waiting till that, to the end necessarily. But I guess I'm envisioning, we have all these different buildings and we have some generous parents and thank you, and you'll be putting money into certain places. And so, if you get three of these that get ahead, how do we get the others up? And that's kind of the question. So, they progress at similar rates as they have access to this? And I think that's probably the question. And like you said, it won't happen all at once. Our goal is to get there eventually. But if 10% of the classrooms at three of these buildings are going to have this, you know, how do we look at making sure that 10% of the classrooms at all the buildings have this? And I think that's probably the bigger question.
I think we would have to do that similar to what we did with technology and similar to what we did with the contributions to literacy, is that as, as some schools maybe become further advanced, then we take a look at our capital dollars in our annual budget and other schools get more options for, you know, or more money for capital outlay in a given year than a different school does or something like that. I mean, it's similar to what we did with the reading. And I don't know for sure what Todd and Chris would say to, to something like that. But I, I think that that would be a similar concept that we would work off. If we are heavy in donations in one area, then their capital purchases kind of get reallocated to start to bring everybody up to a standard, you know, more quickly.
And again, I think that, I think as you sit here, what do you want to tell the PTAs? Yes, thank you, please. And it's on us to figure out between now and when you would be asking us to receive this money, to fill in those blanks for us. Because I do think you have a board that would support that if you can answer that other question about equity. So, I don't know if that helps you as much as you want. But I think the message of the PTAs that I would like to make sure that the board sends out there is, we're not turning down your help. Thank you very much. We've just got some issues we need to get through.
Yeah, that's fine. What I'll do is we'll bring this back internally and try to figure out what we would have to do to make it work. Or if, if we think that it's, it's something we need to put on hold for a little while or whatever. But, but I will, I'll make sure that we can guarantee that before I give any, any definitive response.
Okay, thank you.
Margaret?
Yeah, first off, I want to, I want to thank everyone for really looking at this, this, how we receive gifts. I think it's incredibly important. And I am, I'm very encouraged by some of the discussions that we're having about how do we make sure, you know, one, how do we have a standard idea of the gifts that we want to accept to the, to the district? And how do we make sure that we get some, some parity, some equity, however that is defined? So, I think we are definitely moving in a very positive direction on how we get this done. And I love the creativity that's coming out, using past models like technology and what we did there and how we apply it to bigger, bigger projects and bigger initiatives. I also appreciate the PTAs getting involved in, in trying to find a creative way to resolve this issue. And I think, I know we will find a way that will work for our districts, whatever that way is. Again, as I said, I don't have any preconceived notions about what that might look like. I do want to mention one thing here. Just did some, some quick review of what other unit districts have set up and how their board approves gifts to the, gifts to the district. And I looked at three unit districts. I looked at Naperville 203, Indian Prairie 204, and Barrington 220. And what their process they have for the board is that all gifts are pre, before any fundraising occurs, all those gifts are pre-approved. So, exactly. All, all those gifts are pre-approved before any fundraising occurs. So, there's not a question about how do we fit this in or it doesn't come to the end after the fundraising has occurred and then the district would decide how or if they would take that. So, that is just something that other unit districts have done. We can decide whether we want to incorporate that in to our district or not. So, just sharing that information. And I love the conversation. I'm very thankful that we continue to have it. And I also appreciate all of those PTAs who have money that wants to donate and help our school district. Very appreciative of that. And let's just find a way how we can, can all work together. So, on that collaboration score, is that a proficiency? I think that's what we're trying to go for. Okay. Well, I think that's what we're going for.
I got two more left. Are we good? All right. Well, one, one and a half. Now, update on master facility plan, Dave has already covered. Fund balance policy, this was something that had come up, I think, it come up several times over the course of the last year or two. And then, really at the board meeting when we talked about the audited financial statements. And there's still more work to do on this. And I think that the board is, the committee had indicated that, you know, this is good practice to periodically go back and look where it is because the financial environment changes from time to time and especially now. So, Chris is going to do continued work around comp districts and other policies that are out there. One important piece that John McDonough brought up, which I think is helpful to us as we think about this too, is splitting guidance from policy. And so, a policy may have a, a bright line and be very difficult to violate. Guidance could be more at the level that we're thinking so that you're not tying hands with future boards. So, I think the intent of this policy is to recognize the solid financial footing we put the district on and really kind of relook at the environment that we live in now and try to figure out where that low point is. Because right now, I think in our policy, that low point equals $0. And, and if we were to get to that point, does there need to be some tripwire maybe before $0, which is, you know, $0 was, was set in an environment where we're making cuts every year. And so, that's, that's the purpose of taking a look at this. And what my guess is, this will come out with potentially some updates for policy, but then something a little more around guidance that is less constraining and allows future boards the flexibility to pivot off of. So, again, Chris, that's a conversation that's going to continue at finance committees for, for a while to come.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Anything else? Karen?
Yeah, I thought it was important to highlight the, not study, but the work that Chris did around the fund balance to highlight year over year, the difference between the high point and the low point and what percentage fund balance that is. It was such a great educational tool that made it clearer for people to understand really how we've managed the budget so that we are not in a position where we have to cut. But what the fund balance in reality has to be in order to be in that position so that you have a positive culture. So, I thought that was really good work that we should probably, you know, begin to use that as an awareness and educational tool.
Okay, anything else? Anything else? Okay. So, we have two upcoming meetings, Tuesday, April 9th, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here in District 205 Center. And Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, regular Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here in District 205 Center. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.